All right. And with that, hello. I am Catherine Davis, a member of the League of Women Voters Rochester. I would like to welcome all of you here tonight, to the candidates, the audience, and those viewing at a later time, to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners for tonight's forum, the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library for their help. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we, as a league, do study and take stands on issues, we never support or oppose political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of this forum. And the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an educational opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from LWV Rochester, the Post Bulletin, the Chamber of Commerce, and members of the live audience, plus questions that were submitted earlier. You are welcome to submit as many written questions as you'd like on the note cards provided. Just hold the cards up and hold them up high so our volunteers can see them and collect them throughout the forum. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. And given our format, your questions must relate to both candidates. Questions that fall in the same general category may be consolidated to allow the monitor to cover as many as possible during our short time. We appreciate questions that are forward-looking rather than the past. And if an answer is unclear, feel free to submit a follow-up question or contact the candidate after the forum. Cars become the property of LWV Rochester. As there is never enough time to cover all of the issues in our limited time and setting such as this, we may not get to all questions submitted. Please feel free to contact the candidate's campaign headquarters directly if your questions are not addressed tonight. We'd like to thank all candidates for running for office and for offering to serve our community, for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage each of you, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. Welcome to tonight's forum, which features candidates for Olmsted County Commissioner, District Six. Candidates for this seat are Tawanda Burks and Bob Hopkins. Each candidate will have two minutes to offer an opening statement. The candidates then will respond and turn to questions provided by LWV Rochester, this evening's partners, and by the public, which were submitted in advance and here tonight. Candidates will have one minute each to answer. The candidates will then have two minutes each to make closing statements. I would like to suggest to candidates that you make your answer as succinct as possible and to direct your answers to the audience. When your time is up, or when your time is up, you may finish your sentence, but you must conclude your answer. Each candidate also has three 30-second rebuttal cards. These can be used at any point after each candidate has answered the question. Only one rebuttal card may be used per question, per candidate, and put the card in the basket after you would have used it. I would like to remind the audience to please remain silent during the forum, hold your applause until the end, and turn off all electronic devices. Timekeepers for tonight are LWV Rochester members Anna Fröling and Jan Strand. Questions will be screened by LWV members Kathy Swesso and Mary Jones. Asking questions will be Randy Peterson from the Post Bulletin and Olivia Kloster from the Chamber of Commerce. The candidates have drawn numbers to determine the order of their opening and closing statements, and we will begin with candidate Hopkins with your opening statement.
Great. Well, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, along with the Rochester Chamber, Post Bulletin, and Public Library for hosting this forum. You're performing a vital public service for the residents of Rochester and Olmsted County, and I'm very grateful for your efforts. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bob Hopkins, and I'm running for Olmsted County Commissioner in District Six. I'm a business owner here in Rochester, I'm a Navy veteran, and a former federal government executive. My wife, Ely, and I live in Foxcroft area of southwest Rochester. We have two boys, Owen and Graham. Our youngest, Graham, recently graduated from Lord in 2021. So, other than our Bernie's Mountain Dog, Audi, we are empty nesters. We love this community, and we're proud to call it home. I've always had a strong sense of service. Between the military and government, I've spent 20 years in public service. More recently, as a small business owner, I've been able to serve the needs of customers, businesses, and nonprofits in our community. Now, at this time in my personal and professional life, I'm extremely fortunate to pursue a new dream, to serve my community in elected office. I believe it's a critical time for Rochester and Olmsted County as Mayo Clinic embarks on a period of expansive growth and investment in our downtown. This growth and the changes it will bring will impact this community for generations, so we have to get it right. That's why I'm running for Olmsted County Commissioner. I want to bring my experience, expertise, and dedication to the county board to ensure we can all grow together. I look forward to this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Burks.
Sorry, let me cough out. Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters, the Post Bulletin, Rochester Chambers, the Public Library, and those of you in the room today. I sit before you today not just as a candidate for county commissioner, but as someone who is deeply invested in the future of our community. This is personal for me because our county is at a turning point. The decisions we make now will define the quality of life for every person here today and for generations to come. We're facing serious challenges, including housing affordability that is slipping out of reach for far too many families. Of course, criminal justice is long overdue. Healthcare is inaccessible for those who need it the most, and economic opportunity is unevenly distributed. These aren't distance issues either. These are the hard realities that we deal with every day. But here's the thing, we can change this. Through my employment, I've seen the untapped potential in our community. I've worked alongside organizations, and I've witnessed the power of collaboration and bold thinking. I'm running for county commissioner because I know we can do better, and I'm willing to help make it happen. This is not time for half-measures. We need leadership that is willing to roll up their sleeves, make tough decisions, and push for real solutions. I'm not interested in sitting on the sidelines. I'm ready to lead and to be a champion for every resident and to fight for the future we all deserve. We need affordable housing. We need fair and effective criminal justice. We need healthcare access for every individual, and we need to grow our economy in ways that benefits everyone, not just a few. I'm not here to manage the status quo either. I'm here to help transform it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin the question portion now, and we will begin, the first question will come to candidate Burks. So, the Olmsted County recently abolished its Environmental Commission and Community Social Services Advisory Board. How would you propose ongoing, gathering ongoing citizen input on an array of issues?
That's a great question. I believe the county implemented a MOVE committee, I believe it's called, and I think that's a great way to bring in more community voices that we need here. I think the lack of having a community support and engagement will continue to have community residents, you know, back away from the county and resources that are available. So, I would say that continue to engage with community resources and the leaders in the community as well to help bring voices back to the board and the county leadership.
Thank you. Candidate Hopkins.
So, one of the focus points of my campaign is engagement and transparency. And you don't have engagement and transparency by eliminating those types of panels. You want more people involved in the process, not less. And so, from my perspective, it was a mistake to disband it. It should be reconstituted, and if anything, expanded. And I think MOVE is an excellent example of engaging all people within our community to be a part of that process.
Right. Thank you. Our next question comes from the audience, and we will begin with candidate Hopkins. Homeownership is a pillar of our county, and affordable housing continues to be a struggle for all people in Olmsted County. What are the specific steps you will take to ensure that all people are able to own a home in Olmsted County?
You know, affordable housing is something that's very important to our community, and I think it's important, if not for people's lives, but for our business community as well. As Mayo Clinic expands, they're going to be bringing more and more people in. These people need a place to live. They need affordable homes where they live and work, right? And so, one of the things that we need to do is build more homes. Work with local developers, provide tax incentive financing, provide other types of tax incentives so that developers and builders can build homes at all income levels. Because one of the things that we find is that, and it's really simple economics, is that if you have a shortage of supply, the prices are going to go up. So, if you expand that supply, you could provide more homes at various price points for various families, and that should be our goal.
Thank you. Candidate Burks.
Can you repeat that question?
Absolutely. Let me find it. Here it is. Homeownership is the pillar of our county, and affordable housing continues to be a struggle for all people in Olmsted County. What are the specific steps you will take to ensure that all people are able to own a home in Olmsted County?
So, prior to owning a home, I think it's very important that we realize what goes into homeownership. And for those individuals that, you know, some individuals that have a home, how do we prevent them from losing a home? I think there's been a real push for homeownership for a lot of communities, especially the BIPOC community, where we see a huge gap there. But there's not a lot of focus on how do we keep these individuals in the home, you know, instead of, you know, going into foreclosure in a short amount of time. So, I think education is really recommended. Financial literacy, of course, for sure. And it's just not about getting homeownership because we don't necessarily know that everyone is looking for a home, right? There are other options, including other affordable houses, but I think eviction prevention is very important as well. And again, I think the biggest thing I want to stress here when it comes to homeownership and everyone wanting a home, I think, is education. Education and financial literacy, for sure.
Thank you. Our next question is going to come from the chamber, and we'll begin with candidate Burks.
Olmsted County is one of the fastest-growing counties in Minnesota. What is your plan to ensure that our infrastructure and services, public health, transportation, housing, waste, can handle this growth while maintaining the county's quality of life?
That's a great question because we already have a lot of disparities that exist in our community in Olmsted County. And if we think about what the future holds, how do we help the residents that we currently have that needs the support, and then also welcome new individuals to the community with all the plans that are going on? And I say that because if we look at economic development issues that we have, including childcare assistance, which is, Olmsted County, I believe, is one of the highest counties for childcare costs within the region, around $1,500 per month. And so, we think about families like, that we already have in a community that can't afford childcare services, and what does the future look like? We think about the poverty that we have in a community where ages 18 to 34 has the highest poverty level in our county as well. That's not even thinking about our blacks and Hispanic community as well, and what that poverty line looks like for them. Healthcare, again, we know we have the lower cost of the annual healthcare cost, but we also know that there's still a ton of people out here that exist within our community that doesn't have dental and healthcare access.
Thank you. Thank you. Candidate Hopkins.
Yes, can you repeat the question, please?
Olmsted County is one of the fastest-growing counties in Minnesota. What is your plan to ensure that our infrastructure and services, public health, transportation, housing, waste, can handle this growth while maintaining the county's quality of life?
Well, I think the county does a great job of planning ahead, and there are a number of infrastructure projects that we could look at that are undergoing right now, including the highway project on Highway 14, and as well as the expansion of the waste-to-energy facility. So, there's a lot of efforts being made to ensure that infrastructure is there to handle the growth that we're anticipating moving forward, and I would certainly support that. And I think work with my commissioner colleagues to develop a strategic plan so that we continue to plan ahead for the growth that we anticipate.
Thank you. Another question from the audience, and we'll begin with candidate Hopkins. The city of Rochester is approximately 80% of the tax capacity of Olmsted County and 75% of the population. Because of this, Rochester taxpayers pay for the cost of city government and a significant amount of county government. Given this circumstance, are there any areas of local government you feel could be consolidated to reduce cost and promote overall efficiency?
Well, I question the nature of the question because it sounds like there's an existing competition between the city and county, and the truth of the matter is, is that they both have their own lanes. And the county, while it gets some funding from the city, it also provides almost 100% of social services to the city. These are important services. They're expensive. There's a considerable county staff to provide those types of services. And so, I just think that it can't be an either-or. It has to be, let's work together to make this all happen and to serve everyone's needs.
Thank you. Candidate Burks.
I would have to agree that I don't believe that consolidation could work, but I also am a huge advocate of collaboration. There's a lot of services that both organizations offer that the community is in need of, but I do think collaboration is key here, in addition to various other entities within a community, including the school district and other organizations, economic development firms for the community as a whole.
Thank you. Our next question will come from the Post Bulletin, and candidate Burks will begin.
Olmsted County Commissioners currently receive an annual income of nearly $58,000. By comparison, a study of seven other counties shows commissioners in those areas receive an average salary of nearly $79,000. Local elected positions are slated to receive a potential 10% salary increase this year to lessen the gap. Do you support this increase?
I do support it. I believe that the county commissioners have a lot of work ahead of them, and the work that they do is worth every dollar. And I believe, it was mentioned earlier, that other leadership within a county also, it was also approved for them to receive that increase in salary, and I support that.
Candidate Hopkins.
So, I would not support that. My perspective is, I'm a business owner here in Rochester, and, you know, my being involved at this point is to give back to my community. It's not to make money for my community. I think some salary is justified because the commissioners provide valuable services. But that type of an increase, I can tell you, most people in this city aren't going to see a 10% increase this year. So, I oppose that.
Great. Thank you. Our next question is-
I have a rebuttal for that.
Yes.
I would like to say that it's not like you're sitting on the local nonprofit organization board, you know, doing the work. This is a lot of time that is committed back to the community, back to the services, back to the work, and leading various departments within a county, so I do support it.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next question comes from the audience, and we'll begin with candidate Burks. The Olmsted County Sheriff has reported a 700% increase in DUI arrests since recreational cannabis was legalized. What can you do as a county commissioner to help reverse this trend?
Can you repeat that question? I want to take every word in.
Absolutely, and it's actually candidate Hopkins will begin the answer with this. But yes, I can repeat it now. So, the Olmsted County Sheriff has reported a 700% increase in DUI arrests since recreational cannabis was legalized. What can you do as a county commissioner to help reverse this trend?
I don't know if we're going to reverse this trend. What we can do is provide the sheriff and the sheriff's department with the resources that they need to address this concern. They've not only seen an increase in that, but they've also seen a significant increase in drug overdoses. They've seen a significant increase in mental health incidents, and these things, you know, aren't going to subside. It's going, in all likelihood, it's going to get worse, particularly as we start to proliferate cannabis facilities. I know that 14 are planned around the county, and I believe the city is going to stick with that 14, but that's only going to increase some of these problems.
Great. Thank you. Our next question comes from, oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so glad I have to hear that. Candidate Burks.
You know, that's a serious concern for our community. I'm not for or against the cannabis use, you know, I'm more of a to each his own. But I will say this, that if you are driving while under the influence of anything, and it can cause serious harm to yourself or others, it's never good. So, I think, I don't know of the most effective way to reverse this. I mean, I would suppose it's just like reversing or trying to implement any other, you know, situation if there was driving while under the influence of alcohol. But I do think that this takes some serious strategic planning around the use of cannabis within our community and what that outcome looks like for everyone.
Thank you. All right. Our next question actually comes from the League, and we will begin with candidate Burks. Burks. According to the recent ALIS study released by the United Way of Olmsted County, one out of every three households in Olmsted County is unable to meet their basic needs, which may include housing, food, childcare, transportation, healthcare, and technology. In what areas will this information impact how you make decisions?
I would actually argue that it's one and a half houses out of that study compared to just one. Currently, I'm working on a lot of these initiatives already with individuals within our community that are, that lack the basic need supports, and that including various boards. But I would say one of my personal goals is to work with individuals that are facing these insecurities. If it's with housing, you know, working with individuals, how do we get them housed? If it's with employment, mental health, whatever it is, you know, like I said, I work in various capacities already on various communities that support these additional initiatives. But I think that those that are in these situations don't realize the support that we actually do have in these communities. You know, I think a lot of times that this information comes out when these studies are done, but I'm out in a community every single day, working with individuals that are facing these problems in real life. And that's the reason why I would argue that it's more than one in three homes that are facing these challenges.
Thank you. Candidate Hopkins.
So, you know, families face a variety of serious issues, and it's worrisome. And there's a number of things that we could potentially do to help address some of these concerns. Most of the time, or one of the major concerns, is in the area of childcare. And one of the areas where the county has some say is they are responsible for overseeing home-based childcare providers, right? And the city or the state has cracked down on home-based childcare providers. Often, this is the most affordable way for working families to be able to maintain their jobs and continue to build, you know, bring in income, right? And so what we need to do is work with these home-based childcare providers and enable them to be able to operate, but not put them out of business.
Thank you. All right, another question from our audience, and we will begin with candidate Hopkins. How can the commissioners balance the county's needs in terms of programs, employees, and facilities with the plans to make improvements at Graham Park?
Well, I don't think it's a significant balancing act. Graham Park, from my understanding, is largely funded. I believe that, you know, I have to credit Sheila Kiskaden for this. She has done a fantastic job. She was the principal champion for that. And they did secure funding for the exhibition center. I know that Graham Commons, with some of the outbuildings, particularly the maintenance building and the old emergency management center, is still up in the air. And hopefully, we'll get that resolved. But it seems to me that most of that is already funded, and it's thanks to Sheila Kiskaden and the commissioners for that.
Thank you. Candidate Burks.
Yeah, I believe it is already funded, but I think the biggest thing to navigate here in this space is communication back to the community and knowing exactly what the community needs and what the community wants. I think that input is very essential to that project, and I think that as long as there's communication in place, I think things will go fine.
Thank you. Our next question will come from the chamber, and we'll begin with candidate Burks.
What barriers do you believe exist that might prevent development in Olmsted County?
What development do I believe? Can you repeat that?
Yep. What barriers do you believe might exist to prevent, what barriers do you believe exist that might prevent development in Olmsted County?
I think the biggest barrier, being a woman of color sitting on this stage, to be honest, would be not enough diversity within the county. I think that's the biggest barrier for us to grow as a community and hear more voices.
Thank you. Candidate Hopkins.
So one of the principal barriers is county regulation and city regulation. Developers want to develop. They want to build homes. They want to be able to provide a wide base of home options for people in this community. And it's important that they be afforded the ability to do that. But when we're looking at the city and the county requiring developers to pay for roads, to pay for sewers, to pay for curbs, to pay for parks, I had one builder tell me that he was asked to build a bridge over a river for a bike path into their development. I mean, at some point, it has to stop. And if we ask about affordable housing, the city and the county has to step up and help pay for this. They'll get them, the old model was, you'd get the money back by expanding the tax base, and I think that's going to happen here. But it has to happen.
Great, thank you. Another question, did you have a rebuttal?
I was actually, yeah, I'm going to use it. I just want to argue that I don't think that that's the biggest rebuttal, even though I gave my rebuttal as being a person of color. But if I wear my small-business-owner hat and thinking about some of the things that I had to go through as a small-business-owner myself, that's a huge barrier for a lot of small-business owners to navigate county resources and opportunities for them to have access to business ownership.
Thank you. All right. Another question from the audience, and we will begin with candidate Hopkins. Please share your thoughts on Olmsted County's homelessness crisis, and what do you feel is the best approach to begin solving this?
So there's no doubt that there is a homeless issue in Rochester and Olmsted County. I think that the number is 320. 320 people at any given time are homeless within Rochester. I believe that between the Warming Shelter, the Salvation Army, and maybe Dorothy Day, there's less than 100 beds for people who are sleeping outside. That is insufficient. It's not enough. We can't build a home for every single person. They're suffering from a wide variety of issues. What they need is a place to sleep that's safe, and they need access to service. Only then can we try to transition them into jobs, careers, livelihoods, and hopefully homes.
Thank you. Candidate Burks.
Yeah, the county is mandated by the state to provide housing to low-income and the unhoused. And as I think about what that means, it means that, and we still have homeless within our community. For me to know that, that says that we need to do better as a county to have more affordable housing, like I mentioned before, supportive housing, emergency housing and shelter, eviction prevention, and I'll stress that again, eviction prevention, as well as transitional housing. And I think that because the county has mandated to provide these services, but we still have, you know, a couple hundred individuals every night that doesn't have a place to sleep, that shows that we need to do more within the county.
Thank you. Another question from the audience, and we will begin with candidate Burks. What role do you believe a county commissioner plays in addressing racial and religious intolerance?
I believe the county has a resolution for that. Yet we still have that within our community. You know, racism is one of those things that, it doesn't matter how hard we fight to eliminate it, it's going to exist, just because some people are just nasty individuals. But I think, I think that as a commissioner and who I am as an individual, regardless to where I am, I will continue to fight to eliminate racism and ensure that all aspects across the community, including housing, access to small-business ownership, access to resources, and all these things that exist that is equitable and fair across all channels.
Great, thank you. Candidate Hopkins.
So there should be no place for hate anywhere in Rochester and Olmsted County. It should not exist. Where it does, it needs to be addressed and driven out. I strongly believe that people, no matter who they are, where they live, what color they are, who they love, all deserve dignity and respect. And that's just unequivocal.
Thank you. Another question from the audience, and we'll begin with candidate Hopkins. Olmsted County is leading the state in addressing the nitrates and groundwater issue. Do you support continuing to fund this program going forward, and how would you propose spreading it region-wide?
I absolutely support it. Nitrites are a serious issue. I have to give the county a lot of credit in working with the ag community here in Olmsted County. And I believe that they are working with surrounding counties. And to the extent that they can do more collaboration with surrounding counties and even programs statewide, I think that would be beneficial. But the bottom line is, this is a very worthwhile program, and the county is well-engaged with the ag community in addressing it.
Great, thank you. Candidate Burks.
Can you repeat that question, please?
I can. Olmsted County is leading the state in addressing the nitrates and groundwater issue. Do you support continuing to fund this program going forward, and how would you propose spreading it region-wide?
Okay, so one of the things I do know is that when you don't have an answer, you say, "That's a great question." So, but I do know that if it has anything to do with ag, I would add that I think we can do a lot more in that space when it comes to ag. I will say that. The work that I do every day actually is starting to cross more into the ag community. So I would say this is an opportunity for me to learn more about what that project is about.
Great, thank you. Thank you. And this will be our last question before closing remarks, and this comes from the audience, and we will begin with candidate Burks. While a lot of, there's a lot of projects going on in the county, many of them are being done by businesses outside the county. How can we ensure that Olmsted County's small businesses have a chance to compete for these projects?
Not just Olmsted County small-business-owner, but also people of color as well. Business opportunities there, because we do have huge gaps when it comes to bids being offered to people of color and their businesses. But I do think that the county should take priority for small businesses here within the county first, before those projects are extended to those outside of the county or region.
Great, thank you. Candidate Hopkins.
So I believe that the problem is not just limited to the county or to the city. You know, Mayo Clinic also uses vendors outside of the city, outside, in many cases, outside of the state. And I wish that there were venues, opportunities for local small businesses like my own, and I say this somewhat selfishly, to get some of that business with Mayo Clinic, with the county, with the city, et cetera. I have signed up with the county for bid opportunities. I have yet to find one that actually applies to my business, and I look at them every day. So I'm still waiting. I'm still hoping. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And with that, we're going to move to closing statements. And candidates, you have two minutes to speak, and we'll begin with candidate Burks.
Thank you. As we come to this close of this event, I want to leave you with this. Our county is at a critical juncture. The challenges we face, whether it's housing, criminal justice, healthcare, economic opportunity, are not impossible, but they do require leadership that is ready to confront these issues head-on with vision, purpose, and action. I'm not running for county commissioner to maintain the status quo, as I mentioned in my opening statement. I'm running to help reshape it. I'm running to ensure that we have a county where every resident has a fair shot, where housing is affordable, justice is equitable, healthcare is accessible, and our local economy thrives for everyone, not just a select few. This campaign is about building a future that works for us all, and I firmly believe that when we work together, we can turn these challenges into opportunities. But that requires additional vote leadership, someone who's willing to stand up, make the tough decisions, and be accountable back to the people that we serve. I'm ready to be that leader. I have spent my career advocating for real change and creating opportunities for growth, whether it's through my role at my place of employment or my work within community on various organizations. I have seen the resilience of this community, and I know what we have and what it takes to succeed. But I can't do this alone. I need your support, whether it's through vote, volunteering, or simply spreading the word about this campaign. Every bit of help brings us closer together. Let's continue to build a county where every resident feels seen, heard, and valued, where opportunity and justice are not just privileges, but guarantees for all. I'm ready to help lead us there, and I hope you'll come join me in making this vision a reality. If you want to learn more about who I am or my campaign, you can visit my website at twandaburks.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Hopkins.
Well, thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and thank you to everyone in the audience this evening. It was an honor and a privilege to participate in this event tonight and share my views and plans with all of you. As we've discussed tonight, there are a lot of issues and challenges facing Rochester and Olmsted County. I will work with my county commission colleagues to ensure that our path to growth and development is open to every voice, and will focus my efforts to engage all communities within Olmsted County to grow together. And I'll do so with the following values in mind. Engagement. Everyone should feel welcome to share their voice and be a part of the process, including neighborhoods and businesses, underserved and immigrant communities, the healthcare and agricultural communities, and many others that have a stake in the outcome of various Olmsted County projects, programs, and investments. Transparency. As leaders in Olmsted County, it's incumbent on all of us to ensure residents are fully informed and given the opportunity to participate in the process at every turn. Responsibility. Olmsted County must focus on the responsible use of resources to ensure the county is adhering to sound financial practices while making the investments needed to benefit everyone. I would bring valuable experience and perspective to the Olmsted County Board. As a business owner, I understand what it means to make payroll, manage to the bottom line, market and sell your products and services, and build trust in a community. I've learned that if customers trust you, they'll trust, they'll work with you. But you must earn that trust and build goodwill in the community. I believe I've done that here in Rochester and in Olmsted County. You can contact me, Bob Hopkins, bob@bobhopkins.org, and learn more about my campaign. Donate or volunteer at my website, bobhopkins.org. Thanks again, and please vote. Bob Hopkins for County Commissioner, District 6.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hopkins.
I'd be grateful for your vote.
Thank you, candidate Hopkins. Thank you. Making me work for it tonight. I would like to thank each of the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you for your service to the community and your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I would like to remind you that the views expressed in tonight's forum were those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of the forum. Thanks to our partners, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rochester Post Bulletin, and the Rochester Public Library. Remember that Election Day is November 5, and that early voting starts September 20. Please remember to vote. If you have a question about your polling place, would like to see your sample ballot, or learn more about the candidates, visit 411.org. To see this forum again, access the forums from the LWV Rochester website or the Rochester Public Library YouTube channel. The library and the LWV Rochester post complete unedited recordings of this forum on their websites. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of this- Excerpts or edited clips of this forum may not be posted on the candidate websites or social media or used for political purposes. Links to LWV or Rochester Public Library recordings, however, are welcome. Um, and good night, everyone, and please remember that the library closes at 8:00 PM. Um, and so, we would encourage you to, uh, begin moving, uh, outside after you briefly congratulate and have your discussions outside. Thank you so much.